So, next we have a presentation for Public Safety Report with a Public Safety Report from our police chief.
Good evening mayor, council members, city, summer at City Hall people. Appreciate you guys being here today. We're gonna be doing an open house also council member Buckland, I will make sure that I have my 2014 Fusion there also, it's a hybrid. So today I'm here for the public-
Wait, chief, it's a 14?
Yes, sir.
So you need to wait a couple of years, okay? Let's not be too out front on this.
We are well equipped at the police department, we get good equipment. I just happen to have an experimental vehicle. We're here today to talk about the police department, a little bit of information about it, background, we want to also tell everybody about our upcoming K-9 event that's coming up Saturday, and I'll have my K-9 team Sergeant Eschman, Officer Souls, and Officer Gibson. I think Officer Gibson's gonna be doing the speaking, he's got the time down pat. And then, Community Policing Coordinator Katie Goodson is gonna present the council with some presents we have over here and talk about our trading card and what we're doing to get out in the community a little bit more. So just for some basic background, we'll talk a little bit about our basic structure, calls for service, what a uniform crime reporting part one crimes are, our areas of emphasis for next year, then we'll open it up for any questions. So Uba City Police Department, we have 64 sworn police officers. By sworn, I mean officers that carry guns that respond to calls that have the potential of danger, make traffic stops, and then we have an additional 25 civilian positions which range from dispatchers to community service officers. Currently, we have two open positions for the sworn, and I will tell you right now that the recruiting efforts have been tremendous, we've had, in fact, the mayor helped us with streamlining some of the way that we do the back, or we do the process of hiring. The council supported us with some lateral incentives to bring officers with prior experience by offering some incentives to compete with other agencies. And as a result, we had like 12 down last year at some point in time, and this year we are currently two. If everybody makes it, if everybody makes it through background and everybody makes it through the police academy, and we also have a hiring list right now that we are going to fully staff up, so it's looking very good in that respect. We have the police recruiting team is going to Uba College on June the 30th to talk to their modular academy. Recruiting teams are visiting academies in July, and again, we're doing this in preparation because we always have attrition rate, and right now we have two officers that are slated to retire in the very near future, and we want to make sure that we have officers there to replace them. We also have a lateral from U-, I probably shouldn't say right now, we have a lateral that's in background. We do 14.65 square miles is our jurisdiction, we're divided into five different beats. So we try to divide the city equally so that the calls for service kind of balance out, and they might not be the same size geographically, some calls may demand a greater service, and some might be a smaller service, but we do it in five areas, one officer's assigned to that beat, we have a couple of backup officers in the best case scenario, then we are augmented by traffic and investigations, community service officers. So this is just some pictures from the 2017 Peace Officer Memorial. One of the things that we're faced with every day as our officers do go out there and they do put their lives on the line, and sometimes there's consequences for that. So we want to make sure that we never forget and we always honor them. Right now, we're gonna have Community Policing Coordinator Katie Goodson come up and talk for a minute. I just want to show a picture from the National Night Out from last year. There's Katie.
Good evening. Again, my name is Katie Goodson, and I'm the Community Policing Coordinator here at Uba City Police Department, and I've been in this position for about a year, and I just wanted to update you guys on what we've been doing, the accomplishments of that position, and how we've been out in the community. So first and foremost, before I run out of time, I'm super excited to announce the completion of our trading card program. Just got it done, got the posters done and framed, and so each of you will receive a framed poster as well as a set of the, of all the employee cards, so for everyone to see, including the students here. Oops, and it's upside down. So, here is the framed poster, and last time we did this was about five years ago, and we had 53 employees participate. This time, it was 78, so I thought that was kind of cool, we had a lot more participation, everyone was super excited, some other, some more than others, but everybody was really happy to get this done, and at the summer stroll this past Saturday, we did our first, basically, release of them, where we started to hand them out, and had a really positive response, a lot of people looking for a certain officer's cards, wanting to know who they were, what the program was about. Also, this fall, like Chief Landon was saying, we are going to host an open house at the police department, and at that time, we're going to announce the winner of a contest that we're going to have as far as who can collect the most cards, and this will be ages zero to 12 years old. Whoever can collect the most cards will be put into a raffle for a prize, so that'll be another incentive for people to engage with the officers, just get to know them, collect their cards. I will make it very clear, though, that they're only to contact the officers when they're not, you know, responding to calls or arresting a subject, you know, when it's safe, maybe at a community event, or something like that. So, also, let me set this down. Also, I just wanted to talk about a couple of other community events we have going on. You guys have heard, and Mayor announced the last Count Me In For Coffee that we had. The Count Me In For Coffee stands, it's an acronym, the COUNT is Community Outreach, Uniting Our Neighbors Together. So we have those, we try to do it once a month, since implemented, we've had seven of those at various businesses such as New Earth Market, and this next one's going to be at Steel House Coffee, though, so, and it's also going to be in the evening, we try to respond to people's requests in the community, like if they say, you know, can you have them on a Saturday? We've done it on a Saturday. Can you have it in the evening? The next one we're going to have on a Monday evening, and that'll be July 16th. So we're really excited about that. That's kind of like coffee with a cop, in case you guys don't know, and maybe some of the students have heard of something like that, where our officers just go out to these locations, we invite the community members to just talk and have coffee and goodies, and just a relaxed atmosphere where people can engage with our personnel and ask questions and bring up concerns and hopefully find resolution. In addition to that, I just wanted to touch on our volunteer program as well. It's still thriving and growing, we currently have 25 volunteers at the police department, and I have approximately five going through the background process right now. So again, that's really great to have such a strong and active volunteer program at the police department. In addition to that, let me look at my little notes here, we also, like I said, the trading card program is completed, so we're going to start bringing those out to the sponsors, the businesses that sponsored cards, each of them will have a framed poster like we presented to you guys. And I think, oh, National Night Out, almost forgot that. The first Tuesday of the year is always national, I'm sorry, the first Tuesday of August every year is National Night Out, and it's a nationwide campaign, so that'll be Tuesday, August the 7th. We are going to have a briefing at the police department, we invite all of our personnel as well as the city council, and the fire department gets involved. Locations can register their events through our department, and so we make sure to stop by at these different locations. It's kind of like a big block party where everybody comes together, expresses their, you know, unification with fighting criminal activity in their neighborhood, getting to know their neighbors, coming up with plans as far as to combat crime from happening in their areas, and we just try to make contact with these neighbors and community members to let them know that we're here, to introduce them to the officers who handle those beats. We make sure to assign certain officers to attend certain locations and events based on where they work and the areas that they're handling on a regular basis. So, again, that's Tuesday, August 7th in the evening time, and we invite everyone to get involved with that and really to kind of come together as a community. And that's it.
Great, thank you so much Katie.
Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, Katie, that was July 16th at what time again?
And so the next Count Me In For Coffee is July 16th at 6:00 PM, and that's at Steel House Coffee.
Thank you Katie.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Katie, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you guys.
That is a wonderful program's put together.
So last year at National Night Out, the fire department tried to steal our Community Policing Coordinator, and we were able to withstand that. We appreciate the council actually moved the meeting so they can all attend the National Night Out, because there's a high importance put on there to have the community engagement, and we're very fortunate to have Katie. We, last year we identified a need, and that was getting out in the community more, the council approved that along with two new community service officers who we were able to hire and have on the road in December, and the only unfortunate thing is we just, Lucy Lane just retired tonight as we're speaking, after 24 years as a community service officer, so, and she absolutely refused to come up here, she does not like recognition, but I just wanted to point that out, she was a great, she'll be missed. Another National Night Out photo, like I said, everybody gets involved in that, and we get a great response from the community. So my next segue here, or the segue for the next group, is going to be Officer Chris Gibson, Kenny Souls, and Sergeant Eschman, and Gunner's here, we left Fosco in the car for right now, but it is air conditioned.
Thank you chief, and thank you everybody for giving me the chance to talk. Again, my name's Chris Gibson, I've been with the police department for about 12 years now, and for the last five years of my life, I've been teamed up with Fosco. So that's been my life as the K-9 unit. Currently, we only have two dogs, Fosco and Gunner over here in the corner. Both dogs are apprehension dogs and article dogs. And so basically, our main function right now is we support all the patrol services. So we still go out and we handle all our day-to-day calls for service, frauds, all that fun stuff that everybody wants to be caught for. We also provide an on-duty presence at our problem areas, at our bars, gang areas, all that sort of stuff. By on-duty presence, I mean you can actually drive through these areas and hear the comments of, oh, it's the K-9, and no, I don't want to deal with that dog, as you're driving through. So we're actually having effect just by the simple presence. We also provide on-scene presence, and what I mean by on-scene presence is if we have somebody who's actually threatening to fight, or actually has gone and hid themselves, a lot of times just by hearing the barking, or hearing a K-9 announcement, that person will come forward and it completely diffuses that situation. Also, if there's any kind of in-progress call where there's a crime of violence, or you know, potential violence, or the person is fleeing or anything like that, the K-9 officers are expected to kind of step it up and set perimeter and take charge of that call until that person is either determined to be gone or located. We also assist a SWAT team. Currently, Kenny and Gunner are the only dog team assigned to the regional SWAT team, which consists of Uba County and Uba City. The two of us are available 24/7 for any kind of calls, any kind of, again, anything that's violent pursuits or anything like that, they'll actually call us at home and we're expected to respond out to that scene. We also do a lot of agency assist call-outs. Recently, Uba County had a shooting, actually had a murder, and they called us out to do an article search, looking for the stolen gun, or for the gun that did the shooting. We'll do a lot of school demos, usually like the Great Classes, or we'll come out and do demos for those, and also for the Citizens Academy. The times that we will use a dog is anytime there's a serious offense, which usually is something of propensity of violence, that person poses immediate threat to the officers, the handler, or citizens, so again, usually it's just somebody hiding. And when we say, or they're actively resisting, and active resistance for us is that person is actually hiding from us, like they know we're there, and they've decided to hide from us, or they're physically fighting with us, and we need the dog to overcome that. And the whole point of that, of using that dog is, they're primarily a locating tool. If anybody's watched the news, the ambush has become the headline on a regular basis. The dog eliminates that, because he's able to go out and that knows, he can, he can find him and tell us where they are, and either bite him, or they bark and let us know where they, that person is. That dog, again, he can safely enter somewhere that we're, we can't go, long hallways across open areas, the dog can do it safely, and you don't have to, you don't have the human resource out in the open and exposed. The dog's act is a force multiplier, I've been present on multiple occasions where we have a crowd that's unmanageable with the, with the number of officers on duty, and the presence of that dog was able to, basically, we consider one dog the equivalent of like 10 to 15 cops, and by that one dog, we're able to defuse the situation and keep it from becoming more serious. Again, the presence of the dog, more often than not, the person will just completely surrender, and that just flat eliminates any use of force, any litigation that could arise from that, injuries to officers, it just goes completely away. And the, again, for surrenders, just to clarify what I mean by a surrender, that is a person who either flat out, they saw the dog's presence, and they said, hey, I don't want any part of that dog, don't let that dog come out and get me. And maybe we couldn't even use the dog in that particular situation, but they didn't know. The other, other types of surrenders we talk about are where the person has done a serious offense, they're confronted by the dog, and their options are you either surrender, or you could be bitten. Currently, between the two dogs, we are right at, or just over, 100 surrenders between the two dogs. And, again, one of those surrenders, a notable surrender for us was, Uba County SO requested assistance, they had a guy hiding in an attic, he had a couple felony warrants, was known for drug trafficking, firearms history, and it was a crime of violence that he'd just done, I think he was, he was one of four, currently wanted for hit-and-run with serious bodily injury, and he'd previously been taken into custody by the feds for firearms possession. Well, they hear this guy in the attic, they know he's in the attic, the family told him he's in the attic, and he still won't come out. Well, the deputies made the decision, they were going to go in, and they were going to arrest him. So there was gonna be a confrontation where they were gonna have to come through a small space in order to confront this guy, who knew they were there and was hiding. Fosco and I get on scene, I make several announcements, there's no reply, so I have Fosco bark. When he barked, the guy yells out, hey, let me see my kids first, it's a couple days before Christmas. And so we kind of negotiate back and forth, and hey, you guys gonna let him see his kids? Yeah, we'll let him see his kids. All right, we'll let you see your kids, come on out. He comes out, he looks down, sees Fosco and started crying, which is weird, I've never had that happen before. So they take him into custody, and they go up expecting to find large cache of drugs, but what they actually found was that he had gone all the way to the back of the attic, barricaded himself behind some boxes, left a small hole, and buried himself in the insulation, was laying there with a gun, waiting for us. So that particular day, had Fosco not been there, one of those deputies, or the suspect, or any number of things, they could have wound up dead out of that, and that dog just flat, his presence diffused that situation. So anyway, so there's that. Our K-9 trial that everybody's been talking about, it's as community-oriented as you can get. We're trying to get, it's really a public safety fair, so if you guys are able to come out on the 23rd, it's this coming Saturday, we're actually starting at 8:00. If you can come out, you'll get to see that AUG's in action, they'll do some protection stuff where they bite the suit and let go, and some search phase, and agility, all that kind of cool stuff. And I think we're gonna have the fire department there, the sheriff's department, few armored cars and stuff, and bounce houses, just so everybody can get out and they can see that we're people, too. And with that, if you guys have any questions, I'm glad to field any questions.
Can you tell everybody where that's gonna take place?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, right across the street, at the, at the church across the street, at Civic Center Field, and at the Latter Day Saints Church, right, right across from City Hall.
Mr. Mayor, just, how many K-9s have we actually had through the years with Uba City?
We've had a grand total of five that I know of, six, six, yeah, we've had six dogs.
I know that in the past, they've been pretty accomplished through the, I guess, the K-9, I'm gonna call it Olympics in the testing that they've done. They've done pretty well, and, and very obedient and very responsive. How are these two we got right now faring along that?
Last year, in the Western States Police K-9 Association, there's several, there's over 100 dogs that compete in this thing throughout the year. Kenny and I, with our dogs, we took top team out of the state, so, first, out of the state, and Fosco and I took second out of all the teams in the state, and Kenny placed fifth out of, out of everybody.
That's fantastic.
That's awesome.
I know one's a little more energetic than the other ones, so I-
He is.
I think he's having to be in the car because of that.
Yeah, yeah, he's a little rambunctious for this.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Kenny wanted me to mention that most departments our size have more dogs.
He qualifies.
It's just a subtle hint.
We're really happy with, I think we do have the two best handlers in the state and two of the best dogs, so we're very appreciative of all the work they put in, way beyond a normal eight to five or 10-hour day, they have to put in a significant amount of time. And if you can see Gunner, can you walk Gunner through, will he? I know a lot of you guys didn't get to see him earlier.
Thank you.
So we just wanted to show off a little bit and bring them out today, and just show off some of the people that we have, because they are behind the scenes, Katie, and, well, not so much Katie, she does the social media, too, but the K-9s for sure, and we wanted to make sure that people got to know who Katie was.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm gonna go through real quickly on the rest of the stuff here, because I know we're taking up a lot of time.
Rob, just really quick, just so the students know, the dogs actually go home with you, right? So, I mean, they, they are partnered with you, so, so just for students' information, I mean, they, they are part of the family, so.
Absolutely, and I know you guys had a chance to do a walkthrough most, well, you all did, actually, but I forgot, and I gave it to you, but I forgot to point out the K-9 wall, so if you didn't see it, there actually is a memoriam to each dog that has ever been a K-9 at Uba City Police Department. So they are our officers also, and we want to make sure that they're always remembered. So I'll go through this rather quickly. I think I'm going backwards, though.
Yeah.
Sorry, I probably slowed down time for you. So our top calls for service, number one alarm calls, suspicious calls, down at the bottom, you'll see transient calls. A lot of the transient calls, we're seeing a rise in them, and it's also tied into welfare checks, so even though it's a welfare check, a lot of those are for transients that we're dealing with right now. 2017 Part One Crimes, I would have given the presentation earlier in the year, but we had some, some hiccups along the way, so I'm gonna start out with 2016 to 17. We track all Part One crimes, which means major, whether, the major felonies, whether it's a burglary, a rape, a homicide, a larceny, a motor vehicle theft, and we track it exactly like every other agency in the United States does, then we report our statistics to the FBI so they can track them. So from 2016 to 17, our biggest thing of notability was that our homicide rate, which had been eight the prior year, was zero last year. Our violent crimes went down from 272 down to 255. Unfortunately, the property crimes went up, and we've seen that, in fact, Rachel Rosenbaum for the Appeal Democrat did a great article on Proposition 47 the other day, if you have a chance, you should read that, because that'll tie in why property crime is rising. Contributing factors statewide, we show the same trend as everybody else in the state, essentially, in California, there's property crimes are normally going up, violent crimes are going down. All right. So this is statistics for the last three years, this is 2015 on the far left, 2017 on the far right. Larceny, which is a type of a theft, we've had a steady increase in. Burglaries, which is basically entering somebody's house or vehicle, or store, or commercial business, has dropped from 429 to 380. Our motor vehicle thefts you'll see is the most significant increase over the last three years. We're working with all our, everybody in the region are showing the same pattern, so we're working very closely with CHP, we just did a big sweep of all the people on probation, it was very productive, and making a lot of significant arrests and turning up leads for the future. Aggravated assaults, it's kind of held steady, robberies has kind of held steady, it's a slight increase, rapes have gone down, and homicides again, it went from zero to eight, back down to zero. So that's from 2015, 16, and 17. Now, looking at a comparison from 2017 to 2018, from January 1st through May 31st, so we're comparing the same timeframe, different years, you'll see that larceny thefts have actually gone down this year, burglaries have gone down, motor vehicle thefts have gone down significantly, aggravated assaults have gone up, robberies have stayed about the same, rapes have stayed about the same, and homicides are also at zero right now. Net five, a lot of numbers up there, you can glance at that if you'd like to, but the big thing that we're seeing is methamphetamine is staying about the same, we've seen a dramatic increase in heroin, and cocaine, I think, was about the same. Commander, or Assistant Chief Garcia's back in the room, do you have anything to add?
No, it's Dr.
Okay. He told that to me, so I knew it was. Basically, investigations, normally we have six detectives, or seven. So as we, as we're staffing up right now, we have lots of people in field training, the big areas that we've seen losses in the past, first of all, our first major priorities of police department is to handle patrol, 911 calls, but, and so when that, when we start to have short staffing, we pull guys out of investigation and traffic, and you'll start to see the enforcement there start to decrease, but right now, we're starting to rise. So our staffing is getting up, we're doing a lot of 290 compliance, which is sexual registrants, a couple of human trafficking things, and right now, we're making sure we get out in the public, give human trafficking presentations in the Citizen Academy, and we're still trying to work on a business academy where we can partner up with them. So some of their notable investigations, accomplishments over the past year, and our priorities for 2018, again, we're gonna continue on gang suppression, violent crime suppression, net five and gang task force maintenance, we want to make sure that our regional partners are cooperating, we're all working as an alliance together so we can have a bigger force multiplier. We're gonna continue to look at the realignment Proposition 47, which basically means that less people are in prison, which was the goal of the propositions, but unfortunately, the ultimate result is there's more criminals on the street. Continue our volunteer Citizens Academies, we're looking at the Walton Annex Station, we'll continue to explore that, and we're doing a parking lot expansion, and that's gonna be presented tonight. Some other priorities to maintain our staffing, filling the ancillary, ancillary positions, traffic enforcement. Councilmember Buckland was a lieutenant with the Uba City Police Department, and his specialty area was traffic, so we want to make sure, and he probably understands that better than anybody in the city, something that we've noticed as the officers went down, our enforcement index went down, which means, the reality is, and I know you guys don't like to hear this, but the more tickets you write for hazardous citations, it lowers the amount of injury accidents. So our goal is to write 25, our goal isn't, but the national, NHTSA says that if you write 25 traffic citations for every one property injury accident, that you'll start to see a noticeable decrease in your traffic injury accidents. It's tough to say. So over the years, a couple years ago, it sunk down to about 10.8, again, remember that 25 is ultimate optimum. Last year, it went to 13.6, which is about a 30% increase, and this year, as we've increased, we have more people in traffic school right now, it is up to 20.4. So, we've made a very dramatic increase on our traffic index, so for you guys, drive careful, please. We have body worn cameras, we had an issue with that initially, but now we are gonna have those fully staffed by the end of this year again, and that was just because technology was too fast for everybody in law enforcement, basically, they kept getting better equipment that held too much storage, and ultimately, there were some gaps, so now we think we figured it out. Again, one of our big priorities, clean and safe, we're working with the Sutter County, we're working with the city, we're working with the other counties, and try to see what we can do about getting people that want to be in homes, in homes, people that want to have jobs, we want to get them in that direction, or at least offer them to help. And we understand that we need to be a big part of that. So, with recruiting, one of the big things that we've seen as a result, we have a $5,000 bonus, basically, if you're a lateral officer at another agency, and you want to come over here, we'll give you $5,000, and then we'll give you a fresh uniforms, new uniforms, sick leave, we let you transfer some of that over. There's four, do you remember the other one?
The, your uniform?
Yeah, no, one more. Anyways, we have four good incentives, and I don't have all four of them, I probably do. So this is prior to it, you can see she's, we're out recruiting everybody right now, we want to have some diversity in the workforce. She wasn't too happy initially.
Start young.
We want to, yes, and we want to, we want to have the diversity, we want to have everybody in there. She wasn't real happy when she found out we didn't have incentives, but then, we told her about it, and lo and behold, she's on her track right now to be our next officer. Comparative data, our crime rate is below similar-sized cities in California, we're below the national average, or less than half the crime rate of 20 years ago still. Property crime rate is trending up, statewide trend is same, and we want to continue to really focus on regional alliances with other agents. And we want to continue to really focus on regional alliances with other agencies. So with that, I will end my presentation and open up for any questions from the council.
Right, you have any questions for Chief?
Through the mayor, I do have one question regarding the alarm. Was being on top of the list for answering alarms, how many of those are false alarms?
I think the national average is around 98, high 98, 99%, lower 99% of all of them are false alarms. And we do have an ordinance that will fines the people that are perpetual or habitual offenders.
Is it somewhere around three, and then you start paying, or is it the third one or something?
It is, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I believe it's three in a year or a certain amount in a quarter. And then, those are mainly malfunctions due to the homeowner. So if we respond to an accurate one, and just if your house got hit, we don't count that as an alarm, false alarm. But the main problem is people not keeping, taking care of it, and we also hold the alarm companies accountable, too.
User malfunction, too.
Yes, very much.
Had one or two.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Chief, just, and I think just for clarification on traffic enforcement, and I'll just, I'll make the statement is, this is not a process of generating revenue for the city of Yuba City. It actually, if you looked at the cost of putting traffic enforcement out and writing a citation, very little of the revenue comes back to the city of Yuba City on a traffic violation. Most of it goes to the court administrative costs and to the county. So when you look at the cost-benefit of doing traffic enforcement, and especially trying to reduce injury crashes, the overall benefit is to the community in not having to suffer additional costs when it comes into insurance premiums and things like that throughout the year, plus not clogging up our roadways with a bunch of destroyed vehicles. Second to that, you saw the, you saw Gunner acting very, very well in here. And much of that comes from Kenny's wife's training, because as she has trained Kenny, the dog has caught on, Gunner has caught on to exactly what he is supposed to do and what Gunner is supposed to do. So I just wanted to make that perfectly clear, that some of it has to do with Kenny's abilities, but most of it has to do with his wife's abilities, who also works at the police department. And then, third, I want to lodge a complaint, and this is an infringement on some copyright material. Ricky Gerardo, or Gerardo, has a copyright violation that occurred at Linda's Soda Bar in Yuba City. And I'm going to lodge a complaint, because I was the first one that ripped off Norman Rockwell with this whole concept of the runaway. And that was done some 20 years ago. But just so you know, this is not a unique concept. That was done and photographed by a gentleman by the name of Billy Oller. And I was threatened by the Rockwell family as a result of that photograph. And so I think that Ricky will probably be facing the same retribution from the Rockwell dynasty. So, anyway, thank you, Chief. The trading cards are great. If anybody wants a complete version, I took out one duplicate. These are for sale at the end of the evening, just come see me.
Duly noted on the complaint.
All right, with that, any other comments? Nope, great, thank you so much.
And I wanted to show the outtakes of the trading cards. So also, this gentleman here, we put his picture up here, because he absolutely refused to do a trading card, so we're hoping to shame him into it. That's Officer Benny Beecham. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.